Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for being with us here at City Hall. Today, our invocation will be given by Pastor Rick Milby with Corpus Christi Cross Project.
Good morning. I want to remind us of the words that Jesus shared with Pilate when he was under the trial of his death. And Pilate says to him, says, "Do you not know that I have power to crucify you, or power to release you?" And Jesus said, "You have no power at all against me unless it's given to you from above. Therefore, no one has delivered me to you as a greater sin, me, unless it has been given to you from above." Those are so many words to me. After pastor in congregation for 38 years, I realized the weight that was on my shoulders and every time I made a decision or brought counsel to people, that I was under the authority of God and that I would answer to Him for every word that came out of my mouth. And so I would admonish all of us here today that we're under that same authority and that the authority you have as counsel is given to you by God. And the decisions you make should be led by His Spirit to make good and godly choices on behalf of the citizens of our city. Let me pray for you. Father, we're grateful today for the privilege of assembling here. We're thankful, Lord, that we recognize Your sovereignty, that You are over all and in all and through all. You have control of all. And, Lord, we know that You, and You alone, give wisdom to those who ask for it. You said You give it to us generously without finding fault. And I pray, Lord, that You would bless each of our council today, our mayor, and each council member, that You would anoint them with Your presence and wisdom, that You'd help them in every decision they make. We know, Lord, that they carry many burdens in their lives. One of our council members today has a daughter in Houston who's undergoing tests and treatment. We pray that she would be with candy. And we pray for Your anointing upon her life. And for each member of each family that's represented here by these council members, God, I pray that You'd bless them. Thank you for our city manager, our secretary, our attorney, each of those, Lord, that they have authority over in our city. And we pray, Lord, Your will would be done here on earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you. And today, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to Texas state flag will be led by Timothy Davila. He's a freshman at Roy Miller High School. He plays basketball and takes all pre-AP and AP classes. Timothy?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Timothy, thank you, and good luck with your studies. Okay, Ruth, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulet Wahado.
Present.
Councilmember Gorlan Barera.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter will be attending later. Billy Lerma.
Here.
John Martinez.
Here.
Ben Molina.
Here.
Mike Pusley. Greg Smith. City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Risley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ruth. We'll move on to Section E, which is our city manager's comments and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. Just two items this morning. One is an update on our budget development process. And I'm going to do that one first, and then, secondly, we'll talk to you about our short-term rental program. It's been a couple of months since council approved the second phase of that ordinance, so we want to just remind the council and the community how we're doing there. So, on the budget, that is still topic number one for the council. And four weeks ago, I presented the proposed budget, the FY '23 budget, to the city council. That was on July 26. And since then, we have held five community input sessions with the community. And during those sessions, we also reviewed the bond 2022 proposal with those that showed up. And since July 26, we've held four of the six work sessions that city council has agreed to undertake to better understand the budget. So, the good news is for the council is that we're on the final two-week stretch of the budget calendar, including next week's public hearings and the first reading to adopt the budget. And then the second reading and the adoption is scheduled for September 6. So, just two weeks to go. So, let's just talk real quick about the community input sessions. So, those were from August 8 through August 17. And we held five of those input sessions with the community and one in each city council district. This year, the sessions were held in person. For the past two years, because of COVID-19, we did them remotely. But this year, we were glad to return in person, as was the community. Residents were able to, if they couldn't attend in person, to join livestream with the city's YouTube page or the Facebook page. And they could also watch on our TV channel, CCTV 20 Corpus Christi. And not only could they watch, but they could message us as well. And we took several questions via those mediums and answered them as well. So, each community input session was hosted by the individual council member of that district. But the mayor and council members were in attendance as well. We had great attendance from this body. And we also had some department directors there to help answer questions if needed. So, the good news is, is that the community continues to embrace this organization's embracement of the community. We're a very transparent, open, and engaging organization, city organization. And to that end, we had 400 residents that attended these five work sessions, which is a 33% increase over the last year. So, 33% increase in engagement with the community this year, which is great. And so, as we promised each of the community members in each of those five meetings, that we would kind of see where the consensus was across the five meetings and see what type of adjustments we could recommend to council to address the majority of the consensus's requests in the community. And so, this year, there was three areas that had a repeat theme and some consensus out there. That includes homelessness, more dollars for homelessness, more dollars for public art, and then more strategy and more dollars for protected bike lanes or bike paths. So, we'll be making some recommendations to council this Thursday and then again next Tuesday on how we can address those community requests or concerns from those budget work sessions. So, regarding the city council workshops or sessions, we know those have been going pretty well. They take some time, but the council's been very engaged and rightly so to better understand the budget and the services that would be provided to the community beginning October 1. So, we've held four of the six work sessions so far. And tomorrow, there'll be a fifth one. Tomorrow's will be at 10 o'clock. We're just scheduled to do the water and wastewater operation, so 10 to noonish or so. And then the sixth one and final one will be Thursday, two days from now. And that one will begin at 9 o'clock. And there's a pretty lengthy agenda of material we'll cover then, so 9 to noon. And then next week, then, next Tuesday, will be a public hearing in the city council chambers. And not only do we go out to the five districts, but we also have several public hearings here on the budget. And so, next Tuesday, we'll have a public hearing scheduled to talk about the property tax rate, the stormwater fee adjustment, and the proposed budget. And then also, it will be the first reading of that entire policy document. So, the budget, the tax rate, and other fees will be considered on a first read next week. And then the second reading and the city council adoption of the budget will be on Tuesday, September 6, so two weeks from today. And that budget will be considered. And the budget is for the new fiscal year that begins October 1, October 1 to September 30. So, that's a summary of the budget. I have one other item, Mayor. I can take a pause to see if there's any questions from the council on the budget.
Do you have any questions, gentlemen? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. Okay, let's talk about short-term rentals. And so, after decades of policy neglect, on January 11, this city council finally tackled the issue of short-term rentals. There was an ordinance that generally gave some provisions for bed and breakfasts, but we didn't have anything in our policy to deal with short-term rentals, even though we knew they existed. So, on January 11 of this year, this city council adopted what was known as Phase 1 of a short-term rental ordinance. It required all legally zoned and legally operating STRs in Flower Bluff and on North Padre Island to register with the city to obtain a permit. And that registration meant that they met some minimum qualifications for safety and security of residents that use those properties. And that was that they had to get that permit by March 15 on those two areas. And then the remainder of the legally zoned STRs, because there's other zoning across the city where they were legally operating, they had to register by July 11. So, after the adoption of the Phase 1, 989 permits were issued. And they were primarily in Flower Bluff and the island, although there was a few others across the city where they were legally zoned to have a short-term rental. So, that was in January. In February, the staff began working on what was to be known as Phase 2 of the ordinance. And that included, Phase 2 included a stakeholder advisory group that was comprised of short-term rental professionals and neighborhood representatives. And so, we know that the issue is the business and then persons that want to protect neighborhood integrity. And so, the staff, using a consultant and that advisory team, developed for council consideration what was known as Phase 2. And it was to, the policy goal was to evaluate how single-family zoned areas across the city could incorporate short-term rentals in those neighborhoods, but still keeping neighborhood integrity. So, basically, a compromise solution that many cities across the country were able to do as well. So, Phase 2 of the ordinance was approved by city council, as we had promised, as the council had promised, on June 28, and it became effective July 11. And the ordinance established specific regulations on STR units to locate and operate within single-family zone neighborhoods. Basically, it minimized saturation of STRs. And so, there was some minimums, some limited requirements on block faces, as we called them. So, that neighborhoods weren't basically overrun by STRs. So, since that time, an additional, this is a low number, 183 additional STRs have registered across the entire city now.
How many? I'm sorry?
183 more. So, initially, it was about 1,889. Another 183 registered since that time. You know, and so, a total was 1,172 registered. And so, one thing, though, to be mindful of is that we had said that the first couple of months, so July, August, September, would be a transition period, and we wouldn't be enforcing the registration. But we will be on September 1. So, this is a timely presentation to the council and the community, meaning if you're operating an STR legally and you've applied for permission to do so in a traditional zone neighborhood, that work has to be done by September 1. So, the grace period, the education period, is coming to a close. Consistent with other policy, we give time to educate the community and make sure they know. And so, September 1 is when all STRs must be permitted within the city to be legally operating. So, staff has done some things to help educate the community. We've updated our website that is dedicated to short-term rentals. We've created PSA videos to assist customers with information and questions they may have about the process of how to register. And the STR website also includes an interactive map where the public can see all STRs that are legally permitted across the city. So, we beef up that website. We need to thank Dan McGinn and our planning department. It's a multi-departmental effort here, but Dan McGinn and planning is the one that's helping pull everything together. So, some next steps include, we know that co-compliance is an issue, making sure people are within compliance. The policy that we recommended earlier, the share, included three additional co-compliance officers. We're in the process of advertising and recruiting those. And these three officers will work what we consider non-traditional hours. They'll be working in the evenings and on weekends when short-term rental situations are taking place where there may be some disturbances in the neighborhood. We recall that we had a short-term rental hotline, so people could call this hotline if there was issues of noise or disorderly conduct taking place. We're still working with the vendor, and we expect that that hotline will become operational in September, October. So, that's good news. And then, we also promised the council and the community that we would be providing two updates, six-month updates. One would be the first six months and the 12-month update since the date of the adoption. And so, this is not one of those. This is kind of an ad hoc one. But the first six-month report will come to city council in December. And so, we expect by then, we can provide council better, updated information on the total number of registered STRs, as well as talk about compliance. By then, we'll have our co-compliance officers hired, and they'll be monitoring the neighborhoods to make sure things like noise and garbage and parking is not happening. So, that is the update on the STRs and the budget, Mayor. I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you for the update, Peter, on there. So, do you know of the 1,172, have we had to turn down anybody because of density, too many on a block face?
Is Dan McGinn here? I think the answer is no, councilman, but let me confirm it with Dan McGinn.
So, that is, as far as you know, it's working. Do we have any idea on the call volume we've had in this grace period, just through our normal channels?
I can get you that as well. There has been some calls to make sure they knew how to register. Some people are a little bit confused on using the online system. And so, we've managed some of those as well, but we can get to use some call volume data.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, just from a complaint side, the enforcement with it, I know it's been real quiet on my front with it, that my call volume has gone down drastically. So, just putting this in place is greatly taking care of the issues that we have. I don't know, rest of the council, for you all, of what you've seen, but at least in the island and the bluff that I'm not getting, that all the concerns that I had prior to the second phase going in. So, thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you, councilman. I think I would reiterate that, that same, same with respect to the city manager's office. The issue had a lot of calls and requests and concerns raised, but with the ordinance passage, it's been relatively quiet. And because of that quietness, that was one of the reasons why I said, "Let's get an update on this even before the six months, just to see what's happening." So...
Councilman Barera?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, so, you know, and it's the same one that you and I talked about with regard to, there's an STR that's operating without a permit. A code enforcement has been out there several times. They've issued citations. So, I guess, I'm assuming that there hasn't been a court date, or what is it, there hasn't been? But, so, what's the process or the flow? Because this particular property owner is still continuing to have activity, and it's the same challenges, whether there be noise, excessive trash. And, you know, the individual has said in occasion, they, there's, you know, about half of the time, people are nice, and a lot of the time, it's loud, but the biggest problem is trash. So, I guess what happens then? Because the code, like I said, code enforcement has issued several citations. So, what's the remedy for the neighbor who's just been tolerant?
Yeah, Miles, so, they, there is a municipal, these are municipal court fines. So, we'll have to check to see if there was a court date held yet, because they may not have financially have been impacted yet, that owner of the STR.
What's the address?
He's giving it to me before.
It's on... Yeah, St. James Court.
Short-term rental on St. James.
We'll check into it, councilman.
I'll check.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so...
Yeah, let me look into it for you, and we'll get back. We'll see how many citations and has there been a court case yet?
Well, there's been several that I know of.
Right.
And, I mean, that I'm aware of. What is it? So, yeah, St. James Court. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Pusley?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, how's our interface going with the companies that advertise the Airbnbs and short-term rentals and that sort of thing? Are we in that process yet, or are we still working on that?
So, we work with them, but I'm not aware of any issue, councilman. We're more focused with our software provider that's going to help us with that call center or call number, as well as the registration process itself. But I haven't heard of anything else. See if there's any follow-up or anything to report.
It was my understanding we were going to partner with a company that was going to help us get the message out that, you know, we do have an STR policy?
Yeah, that's the vendor that we're using to register. So, let me see to what extent they're reaching out to the big STR...
Advertisers.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. And Miles, that address is 7201 St. James. The, you know, that's the one we actually did the sting operation on specifically, that I complained about over a year ago, that was having issues and simply they were having parties at that location. It's there on the corner of Leipes and St. James. Speaking of which, and actually, I was going to bring that out. Thank you to Councilman Barera for bringing it up. The, I wanted to kind of understand this, because this came up through the budget process on the STR. Who's actually managing the process? The budget sits in planning. The ordinance says the director of development services, and then you have code enforcement that's in neighborhood services. So, where do we call? What's the, who's the person in charge?
Yeah, so, as I mentioned earlier, Dan McGinn is the lead department head that's kind of bringing those three departments together. And if you add police, it's the fourth for noise issues. So, development service is the one that registers, because they have to check the block face and the zoning. So, they're part of the process. Finance helps with the registration software and the call line and collecting the revenues. Co-compliance, as you mentioned, is the one that enforces along with police. So, Dan McGinn is the one that works with those three or four departments to make sure...
So, I guess the budget needs to be adjusted to where you show the revenues and the expenditures within the planning department's budget instead of having it, because it just included it in it. There was no separation.
Right, so, the revenues go into the general fund. We didn't create a separate fund. They go directly into the general fund. And then the expenditures, like co-compliance expenditures, will be in co-compliance. And development services has a person that we added to help with the registration. So, their expenditures would be in the development services department.
Okay, it's hard to track where it's at, so...
It is, right. That's what I mentioned. It's a multi-departmental discipline.
Maybe we can get the finance department to kind of figure that out to where it's easier to determine within the budget on how much that the cost is, as opposed to going to the general fund summaries.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I'm still not completely happy with the redlining in the ordinance. I still think that's a little bit discriminatory, but we'll see how that goes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all, Peter.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes your report?
Yes, it does, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let's see here. But we do have five minutes, so we're going to go, I'm going to go ahead and jump over to consent and see if any council member would like to pull any consent item, number one through seven?
Mayor, we can't, under state law, we can't do consent agenda. We can't do an agenda until we've had citizen communication first.
Okay, and we must wait until noon for them?
No, you're not required to wait till noon on the agenda. It just says it will generally start around noon.
Okay, well, if anybody walks in, then we'll allow them to take part. Okay, then, Mr. Risley, would you like to recite our rules of decorum, please?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So, I'll be calling each person in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comments. Corpus Christi residents will be allowed to speak before non-residents. For those commenting in person, I'd like to remind everyone that a recording is made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address prior to speaking. If you choose to speak during this public comment period, just know that if the item is on the agenda at the time of which we discuss it, you won't be able to come back and speak on it at that time. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the podium. It will let you know exactly how much time you have left. Once you hear the buzzer go off, if you will, please wrap up your comments and conclude your public comment. If you have any petition or any information that needs to be distributed to the council, if you'll please give it to Ruth here to my right before you speak, and she will hand it to us. So, with that, we will go ahead and start with Maggie Peacock. Is Maggie Peacock here? Not here. Okay. Okay, and let's see, Armon Alex. Armon Alex, not here. Okay, Savannah Leos. Okay, Savannah Leos, not here. Alec Jackson, Mr. Jackson?
All right, my name is Alec Jackson.
Your address, please, Mr. Jackson?
3717 Woodstone Drive, and I am an employee with Dewatering Services. And I'm just talking about saving our jobs today. Personal accountability. Why do I have to lose my job while the man responsible will go on to the next city project with no accountability? I am a taxpayer. I'm a belt press operator. I see what's happening and very problematic. The city needs to be attentive with the issue and secure our jobs. Force the people to work in good faith for the good of all of us. I have seen the written description of the material by the designer, and it is wrong, terribly wrong. And please address the issue. Please force those who did us wrong to stand up and be responsible to the taxpayers. This is going to cost millions of dollars in wasted funds if this trend continues. And I have asked Mr. Gold to come here today and briefly tell you what the issues are, because I believe as the city, as the city leaders, you need to have the truth before you can make a responsible decision for the benefit of our community. That is all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, thank you. And just for clarity, are you part, there was an email sent, correct?
Yes, I believe there was an email sent.
Okay, I'll allow you to go ahead and comment on that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you. Gregory Galvan?
Good morning, Mayor, city council members. My name is Gregory Galvan. I live at 5770 Hall Avenue. I want to first, I'm a dredge operator and a groundsman for Dewatering Services. dewatering services. And first and foremost, I wanna say I love my job. Um, a lot of us have families here, and in October I became a father of four, a stepfather of four. And it's hard to come home and tell my family, hey, I lost me, my job because the city's engineering company wants to do things in a dishonest way. They wanna lie and not tell us the truth. And basically, all I'm trying to say is please save our jobs. Help us to save our jobs. We need 'em. A lot of these guys here have families, and we don't wanna come home and have to explain this to them because we're not doing anything wrong. So please help us save our jobs. Let us finish the great job that we've been doing. Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Galván, what, what job specifically are you referring to? What's the location that you all are on?
It's at the Stevens Water Plant.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Got it. Okay, we did receive your email. I'm not sure if you sent it to everyone or not, but I know.
I didn't send the email.
Or, Miss, right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Galván.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to get maybe Mayor, Council, usually we don't do this, but just for context. So I think these, these are not city employees. They work for a company.
Right.
And the city does have a desilting project happening at Owen Stevens. It's a pretty large one. Maybe Murphy can talk about it later, or, uh, or Wes, but, uh, I think there was some issues with performance from the prime, and that may be having some impact on the subs, so we'll, we can get some information to the council.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we'll, we'll need some. And I'm assuming you saw the email, Mr. Zanoni?
I have not seen it, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you'll need to. I'll forward it to you.
We'll get it. Okay.
Um, Abel Rivetta.
Mayor, um, City Councilman, um, I'm Abel Rivetta. I live at twenty-four oh-two, Renova River Court. I'm a taxpayer, also a registered, uh, voter, and I sent that, uh, email, um, to you, Mayor. And, um, I just, uh, wanna, uh, the city officials and consultants to be accountable for, um, um, lies and hiding, uh, just hiding, uh, um, things that, um, uh, will make us lose our jobs. And, uh, like the pastor said, uh, you have the power to, um, to look into this, um, and, uh, save our jobs.
Right. Okay. Okay, pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin Sendejo?
I'm Martin Sendejo, um, three oh-one South Pettis, Mathis, Texas. I work here in Corpus. So, uh, the facts are, y'all as elected city councils are here to hear my voice as a voter and an employee. The city hires contractors to work in our city of Corpus Christi, but instead companies that submit records to the city council are being lied to. Yes, it's created new jobs, but now because of the lies and corruption, this company is not able to finish the job it started. Not only has it affected taxpayers, the contractor who was honestly doing their job a hundred percent, but also employees such as myself who now is at the verge of being unemployed, which will affect my family and my, and many others. I ask that you as council members look into this matter and investigate and do the right thing for contractors such as dewatering service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sendejo. Denny Gold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, Mr. Zanoni, I've been, I'm kind of in a very perplexed situation here. I'm a subcontractor for the primary contractor on this project.
Name and address.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dennis Gold, and I live in Slippery Rock, Pennsylvania. Uh, we're the con, we are the subcontractor for the primary on this project. And just to give you a little background where I'm at, I've been in this business for thirty years, ladies and gentlemen. I do lectures nationally. I do, I travel, I've gone as far as Australia to do the, the ponds for the rowing Olympics. I, I have more experience than most in this specialized field, and I can tell you, we've been wronged on this situation. These people are being wronged. And what I'm speaking of is, we can't get the city to work with us. We've been trying for a year and a half now to get the city to come out here and look at what's wrong. And the, the reality here is.
Go ahead.
The reality here is, the bid documents were a fabricated lie. That means every bid you received on this project is gonna be underwater. Our bid is underwater because the, the documents are fabricated lie. We took us a year and a half to find that out. It didn't happen until we took the city to, the, the consultant to court, and under deposition, we discovered all the fabrication that was made in these documents. We've been telling the city, the engineering department, please come out here and look at this project, see what's going on, and they refused to do it. Three times they said, "Me, needs to come out and look at what's going on." Three times, nobody showed up. No call, no cancellation, just nobody showed up. And what's, what's happening, ladies and gentlemen, is, you've got a, you have three basins in that facility. You have Basin Seven, you have Basins Five, Basin Six, and the Presid. The Presid basin is where all the river, the water comes from the river before it goes into the water treatment plant. There's, they're treating them with a sodium permanganate. That's causing a bad oxidation. That oxidation is creating these pockets of very voluminous material. And the, when we first moved in a, a year and a half ago, this material isn't what you said it is. It's not what you described in your stamped documents. That's what we're trying to get the city to come to the table and talk about.
Okay, Mr. Denny, I can, some, we need to address this, this issue. I sent you the letter that I received. Um, but can we have someone talk with, uh, Mr. Denny?
Right, we have, Jeff Edmonds is here in the back, so, um, uh, our engineering director, who you just spoke negatively about, but he can help you out. And then I, I, I'm not, I'm generally aware of what's going on, sir. Next time, call me directly. You can save the council's time. You're welcome to present here, but, uh, call me and I'll sit down with the folks like yourself.
I'm available anytime you're available.
Right, well, just call me. I don't think you have yet, but, uh, we'll be glad to sit down with you. Jeff Edmonds is in the back, and he can talk to you. And our water, uh, chief operating officer happens to be here too, the gentleman in the green tie over there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Okay, and then I think, uh, I'm gonna go through these names again. Maggie Peacock, is Maggie Peacock here? Armon Alex or Savannah Leos? No. Okay. So we'll go to Webex. We have Melissa Zamora?
Mayor, I think those names that you mentioned were for the August sixteenth meeting, not today's meeting. I think they were given to you in error.
Oh, they were given to you in error. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
We won't repeat them again. Okay, so is Melissa on the line? No? Oh.
No, I believe that was for the August sixteenth meeting as well.
Okay. Well, that will conclude our public comment then.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ruth. Okay, then take us over to, um, section I, Consent Agenda, Items Number One Through Seven. Does any council member have any, uh, uh, item, oh, Mr. Zanoni, that they'd like to pull? Items One Through Seven, Mr. Zanoni, you do?
Yes, Mayor, we'd like to, uh, pull item number seven to delay it, not to consider it today. There's a little bit more work that has to be done.
Okay.
Bring it back in a subsequent City Council agenda.
Okay, item number seven has to do with infill housing. So, wait, do we have, well, hang on just a second. Do we have anything else? Slow down. Do we have any requests from the public? Items One Through Seven that you'd like to pull and comment on? Okay, there being no, um, public, uh, comment on any of these? We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, uh, with the exclusion of item number seven, uh, any opposed say no. The motion carries. Okay, so that'll take us to item, uh, or I'm sorry, uh, section... Let's see, are we, uh, is Mr. Murphy presenting, or who's presenting number nine?
Yeah, Mr., uh, actually, uh, Mr. Murphy and, um, Esteban.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
Item number nine.
Yeah, let's do the number nine.
Yes, under briefings.
Right, this is a, uh, this is a briefing on our environmental quality two thousand and one agreed order. Uh, Councilman Pusley, he just, he requested that we, and other council members, that we review this. Uh, this order, uh, is with TCEQ, the city, and the Nuasis River Authority, and it guides or regulates how we release water from, uh, the Lake Corpus Christi. So it has a long history. Esteban's very familiar with it, and we reviewed it the last couple of days, so, uh, he's gonna present today.
Uh, hello, Mayor Council. For the record, my name is Esteban Ramos. I'm the Water Resource Manager for the city of Corpus Christi. And again, today's briefing is going to be over the TCEQ or Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, uh, two thousand and one agreed The agreed order is a complex document. Uh, it's approximately eleven pages. It's an agreement between the city of Corpus Christi, uh, the city of Three Rivers, and the Nuasis River Authority, and the TCEQ. Uh, it is a mechanism for the pass-through of water for environmental purposes, but it also, and this is important, also is a, uh, tool for protection of our water supply. The goals and objectives of the agreed order were to maintain and protect our water supply, protect the economic interests of our citizens, and to preserve the ecological environment and health of our related natural resources in the Nuasis River Basin and Nuasis estuaries. To understand the agreed order, you have to also understand how, uh, water flows down, uh, the Nuasis River Basin. And you have to get an idea, and I talk about it all the time, and it's something that, uh, I'll continue preaching as a Water Resource Manager. Our, uh, river system is a complex system. We have two major reservoir systems in, uh, the Nuasis River Basin consisting of Cho Canyon Reservoir and Lake Corpus Christi. Water flows down the Nuasis River all the way to, uh, and past our Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant, and then it is carried over what we commonly call the Cal Allen Dam near La Bonte Park. And if you're driving, uh, thirty-five, uh, thirty-seven heading towards San Antonio, uh, you'll see, uh, this dam or structure to the left on the Nuasis River. A closer look at how the water is fed downstream, uh, it goes towards the Nuasis Bay and Corpus Christi Bay. It also feeds, uh, the backwaters, which we commonly call or call the Nuasis River Delta. This is an ecologically diverse ecosystem in, uh, that feeds into Nuasis Bay. And, uh, the freshwater inflows are what feeds the ecosystems of both the Nuasis Bay and Corpus Christi Bay. To go further on into the understanding of the agreed order, we have to look at the definitions of what we commonly call inflows, pass-throughs, releases, and spills. So spills are out, uh, are water that is let out of the reservoir, uh, when it's full. It's uncon, it's controlled, but it flows over and, and out of the dam. Uh, releases, releases are what we commonly call, uh, to feed our demands to our municipal system. So those are releases that we send to Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant so that they can then divert out and into the treatment plant to feed the rest of our community municipal usage. And then pass-through. And pass-through is what we're always concerned about, uh, that comes into, uh, and let out, and we call that pass-through, passes through the reservoir system onto the ecological ecosystem for our bays and estuaries. And then it all starts backwards with the inflow. So what is coming into the system? What is coming into the Cho Canyon Reservoir and into Lake Corpus Christi? So those are the definitions of the terminology that we use throughout the agreed order. So a little history on the agreed order. Uh, it is, it all started with the Cho Canyon Reservoir. When it was, when the Certificate of Judication twenty-one dash thirty-two fourteen was created and, uh, and permitted, uh, basically in nineteen seventy-six, it contained a special condition. And this special condition was commonly called Special Condition Five B, Established an Inflow Environmental, uh, Condition. And it's kind of, uh, in time, the seventies, late seventies, you know, we're creation of the Water Act, we had Love Canal, there was a lot of environmental concerns that were going on. And this special condition was added to our, uh, certificate adjudication in that creation. So in nineteen seventy-six, this Special Condition Five B was created, and there lies where we now have an agreed order. Because Special Condition Five B just set out a discussion of how much, uh, water you're supposed to pass or supposed to deliver on an annual basis to the estuary system, but didn't really stipulate how to do that. Didn't give directions how to do that. Just had a small, it was the first attempt for an environmental special condition. And it's curi, it's curious that it was, uh, Lake Corpus Christi, or excuse me, Cho Canyon Reservoir and Lake Texana were the two reservoirs in this area that have an environmental flow, uh, re, uh, special conditions. One of the unique parts of our, our water rights. We were the, one of the first ones. So the agreed order through time, because of the, the issue or the, the, the lack of discretion or, uh, direction in that, uh, Special Condition Five B, uh, was discussed, and there was issues of the city of Corpus Christi by multiple environmental organizations and other agencies throughout the state on how to abide by that special condition. By the nineties, there were a lot of discussions in how we were going to do that. So through time, the agreed order was then crea, was created in early nineteen ninety, and then it went through a couple of, uh, revisions all the way up until nineteen ninety-five with the final, uh, version. And then just recently in two thousand and one, we had an amendment to the original agreed order. So it went from an initial order, then to an interim order, and then a final order, and then we amended it in twenty, in two thousand and one. And then this amendment in two thousand and one gives the, gave the city and gave the water right holders a great flexibility to manage droughts and to manage how we are to deliver water, uh, through a pass-through system. So it was very beneficial that we discussed the agreed order. We went through, uh, as a group on how to modify it, and then we finally came with a agreed order that, that we live under today that is beneficial to both the city of Corpus Christi, the water right holders, and the environment. Pass-through requirements, targets, amounts, and a, and a big component of the agreed order, uh, not to skip, is no releases of stored water is required to meet targeted amounts. So pass-through requirements, let me begin by there. Those, that's the measured inflow into Lake, uh, into both Cho Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi that we use as a system. Uh, this inflows go to the targeted amounts that are required for the bays and estuaries. So the targeted amounts are dependent upon several variables, and these variables are really tied to the measured amount of inflows into the reservoir system and the percentage of the reservoir at that particular time. They are described, what I commonly call regime, are really a schedule, annual schedule of amounts based upon a particular moment in time where the reservoir is created, or wherever the reservoir is at, at a capacity level. And then, we also, the agreed order has a beneficial, uh, credit section where we have the opportunity to take some silently, silently relief credits, I can't say that word, sorry, and return flow credit. Uh, those are very helpful to the, to the management of this agreed order and the benefit that it has for our, uh, reservoir system. And again, I can't stipulate enough, uh, how through Texas law, uh, under the water rights laws, we are not required to release stored water, again, stored water to meet these targeted amounts.
And so Esteban, just to add a little more different word spin on that. So if it's not raining, like in the month of July or August, and the, the lake has stored water, because there's no new water from rain, we don't have to release any?
That is exactly right. So there's no inflows. And I kinda repeated myself on purpose about the inflows, how important that, there isn't a necess, we are not required to release that stored water that you're describing. So that is a benefit under Texas law and under the agreed order stipulated and, and codified in it that we are not required to release stored water to meet these targets.
Okay. Yeah, Councilman Martinez.
Yes, sir.
But isn't there always water coming in through the rivers? I mean, that, that doesn't count as stored water, right? It's not just rain. It's also water that's coming in from the rivers.
Water that is coming into the, to the reservoir system. So it is, there's multiple points or gauges along the reservoir system that will calculate that, uh, inflow. And I talked about credits, the salinity credit and the... And I talked about credits, the salinity credit and the return flow credits. So within the Agreed Order, we have opportunity and we meet it all the time for our return flow credit. So every day of the, every day, we are discharging water from our wastewater treatment plants, from industrial plants, from other permitted sites or permitted locations into the Noasis River Basin and into the Noasis Bay and into Corpus Christi Bay. We get a credit of 500 acre feet a month for each of that towards the targeted amount. So when there's only 45, let's just say 45 acre feet that came in for the month of July, we have a credit of 500. So we've met that credit. With that, we've met that amount, so we don't have to release any.
So, and let me, just to be clear, we hadn't had any rain since last October, does that mean that we haven't released any water since last October?
We-
Under this agreement?
Yes, and I have, I'll have a slide that even shows the, from January to today, the amounts that have come in. So for year 2022, we followed that. So we've, we have released our pass-through very little amount. And we also get credit for water that has fallen below the dam that we couldn't even capture. Say it rains in Cal Allen, really close to the Cal Allen Dam, like these last couple of days, right? And we have a lot of flow coming in, and it goes over the dam. That dam is the point of calculation. So we get all that credit for that water that has passed over that dam that we could, that we account for the entire flow. So in today's report, I was looking at it, and we approximately, you know, almost 45, 49,000 acre feet has come in and passed over the Cal Allen Dam. It's because of all this rainfall, you know, it's been raining up there, it's flow, it's happened below the dam, we get credit. For this month, for August, we're at, because we're between, and I'll get to that in these next slides, we are only obligated as a target, 1,200 acre feet of water.
Hey, Esteban, can I just, I just want to make sure the councilman's, so Councilman, water is released from the dam, but it's in part to get water to the Owen Stephens Treatment Plant. So if we go up to the river today, you're going to see water flowing, just like you said, from the dam point to the point where we take it in, which is a distance, we take it in through pumps to get to the Owen Stephens. We don't take the water from the reservoir and pump it to Owen Stephens. We release it to the river and then along the Cal Allen area-
That's exactly right. So when you described releases, I missed maybe, I'm sorry, misunderstood your question. If you're making, you're going to the dam and you see the dam open and water flowing out of it, that is to, when we talk about releases, that is to feed our municipal supply at Owen Stephens?
Yeah, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about water going into the bay under this agreement.
Okay, well, Esteban will show you those charts, and it's coming up next.
I'm sorry, we don't have a presentation up here. And Sarah, I think you were given the hard copies? No? You don't have the hard copies?
Yes.
But is there supposed to be a presentation? You keep mentioning slide.
Yeah, there is.
We don't see anything.
Let's put the slide presentation back up. Can you all see it there now? Is it on your screens?
You don't have, Sarah, you do not have anything?
We need to print out some copies. We'll have Holly print some copies out for the council.
We've got them, let me get them.
Oh, you do?
Yes. I don't know why they're not here.
We're in the packet, yeah, the presentation's in the packet, there was-
Right, but we had, Lisa had copies, hard copies for everybody. I don't know where they are, I'm trying to find out.
I guess you know what, Councilman, it's not in the packet.
Oh, maybe that, is that the one she gave you?
Yeah.
Okay, I was confused. Okay, we don't have them. What that, okay.
Yeah, my apologies.
Well, it's not on the screen anyway. I mean, so we just, make sure, let's get it on the, it's on the screen now. Yeah, I was thinking, wrong presentation. Okay, that's fine. Should we, what number slide is this?
This is number nine.
Oh, so you already went through nine?
Sorry. All right, let me get back up.
Yeah, just go back up. Yeah, let's back up. Yes, yes. Okay, are you good? Okay, Councilman Pussley, and then we're going to go back to slide, yeah, one, just go through it.
Okay.
Just, yeah.
Esteban, can you go back to the slide where you talk about? I sent a list of questions over and I want to, Mayor, I want to say, I'm the one who asked for this agenda item, and I sincerely appreciate it being put on here so that, I think it's important for the community to understand, and Councilman Martinez brings up an excellent point. A lot of times, my phone starts ringing when they see water going over what I call the Salt Dam. And that is water that we are releasing to supply water to the Owen Stephens Water Treatment Plant and is not being sent into the back bay. So correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the water you are sending now to the estuaries goes through a pipe that y'all have diverted around that saltwater dam?
Not necessarily. So there is a pipe, what you're referring to is the Recon Bayou Pipeline.
Right.
And so we can divert water behind the dam and across to the backwater of the Noasis Bay Delta. That came about because we were approached by environmental groups to create a better mechanism to feed the Noasis Delta. They felt it was more important or that freshwater gets to that back part.
And then I understand they gripe because it was sending too much water, so can't make them happy. My dad always said that the city did that so you would hide what you were actually doing, but that's just a joke. One of the things I want to ask about is, and I ask about in my five questions, and Mayor, I want to say, I may have to step out here in a minute, and I explained to you why earlier, so I apologize if I have to do that. But the depth of our reservoirs change daily. You know, Corpus Christi Lake is not as deep as it was a year ago, it's not as, and so that capacity changes continuously. So do we, do we measure and do we get credit for the reduction of the capacity?
So to answer your question, the Agreed Order and that special condition is based upon the amount and permitted for our reservoir system, for the reservoir. So that was established in the creation of the water right. So the, we have just done a volumetric survey back in 2016 of Lake Corpus Christi and approximately 2015 timeframe for Cho Canyon Dam, or Cho Canyon Reservoir. But the Agreed Order in which we're required is based upon when, if you were to imagine those two, or Cho Canyon Reservoir not being there, what would be the effect on the environment, on the estuary?
No, I understand that, but that's not really my question. My question is, for example, under the Agreed Order, we have about a 50/50 split on the, you know, it's 138,000 acre feet of water that we can hold, and 138,000 we're required to release at some period of time if the lake is, if the reservoir is full.
If it's 100%.
Or it's above, what, 70%?
Yes.
So if that is true, if we are required to release that 138,000 acre feet of water, do we get credit for the fact that we don't now have the ability to hold our 50% of that equation because the lake has silted up?
The only credits in the Agreed Order are the potential for the return flow credits and the salinity relief credit.
Okay, so the answer to that is no.
The answer to that is those are the only two credits that are in the Agreed Order.
So, yeah, the answer to my question is no, which has for a long time been something that I think this city needs to go back and say. Those lakes don't hold as much water as they used to, but we're being required to release water based on an Agreed Order that was signed back in, the latest one was 2001, and thanks to Jaime Capello and State Representative Jaime Capello at that time, and several other people, we got the Agreed Order changed because before we were just releasing water whether it was coming into the system or not. And so the lakes stayed drained all the time, and because of that 2001 change, we then now don't have to release water if there's no inflows. So my contention is, and I wanted to make that point specifically, including the other points that I sent in my communication, is the fact that we're being required to release water based upon the same equation that existed, how many years ago, over 20 years ago, and that lake and the lake in Cho Canyon are not as deep as they were when we signed that order.
And again, the Agreed Order was, is based upon if Cho Canyon wasn't there, how much water would on environmental inflows should be going to the reservoir?
I understand that, but you're still not answering my question, and I'm just going to quit asking.
Yeah, hey, Councilman, can I try, so we talked about this yesterday, Councilman, I did with this team, so what they told me is that the, this order, the flows are to mimic natural water flowing into the estuaries. So it's less about how much depth or how big is the reservoir, and it's more about if neither dam was there, and especially Cho Canyon, how would the water have flowed over the 12-month cycle in a calendar year? And the order is to try to mimic that as best we can. So the height of the water, the depth of the lake, the silting, it won't, doesn't have an impact on it.
I completely understand that, but, but the Agreed Order talks about those reservoirs.
Yes, sir, it did.
And the fact is, that Agreed Order says that we are to release water based upon the volumetric, volumetric capacity of those two reservoirs on a year-on-year-out basis based on the level of those reservoirs.
Right.
And I'm saying that the equation now is flawed and not in our favor.
But it's based upon percentages. So the regime that we talked about under this adjusts. So it does account, I guess, maybe I can get understanding your question even better, it does adjust for that salinity coming in or the filling or siltation in the reservoirs because it is a percentage.
Okay, and that is my question, do we recalculate on a year-in, year-out basis the volumetric capacity of those reservoirs?
Well, not on a year-to-year basis.
So we haven't done it since 2016?
2016 on Lake Corpus Christi and 2015.
I will guarantee you, the silting at my bulkhead at Lake Corpus Christi is at least a foot and a half higher than what it was five years ago.
And one of the items I'm going to be bringing to City Council is a volumetric survey for both Lake Corpus Christi and Cho Canyon. We contract with the Texas Water Development Board to do those studies. So that item will come up in this next fiscal year. So this is the monthly, or I'm sorry.
No, Councilman Hernandez has a quick question.
Just a quick question, do we have any dredging plans for those, or are we limited, are we not able to do that?
It's dredging of the size of the, those lakes is huge and very costly, and we haven't looked at that, no. Extremely costly.
And if I might intercede, that's, it's exact, that's the exact same statement we used to say five years ago about desalination. Well, we're not going to look at it because it's too expensive.
Well, can I just add to that, Councilman? So that, we are looking at it because the price has come down. It's, in fact, based on the worldwide water providers that presented to us about 16 months ago, it was the cheapest water supply for the city, it's come down. So we do, we'll look at, I'll look at this with the team to see what would it cost, I've never, nobody's ever approached it to me, what the cost would be, but I'll look with the team, see what would the cost be, how could we do it, and is there, should we do it? What are the consultants saying? So we'll look at that, though. That's good. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, I brought that up specifically because I know I'd looked at dredging, thoughts about dredging some of our, I guess, retention ponds as well, but, well-
This is magnitude.
I know, I know, and it's a large, I saw, it's a large lake, I get it. But, you know, that, you know, if it's a possibility for us to be able to retain more water.
We'll look at it. And it will go back, just to keep, it would just need to go back to the permitted amount.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilman, oh, I think that's everything. And I think to the statement, Peter and Tio Esteban, you know, it's, it is easy, it is easy, you know, even in our own lives, you can say, oh, no, you know, I could never afford that house, or I could never buy that car, you know, but you really, it just depends. At some point in your life, you very well might be able to. And I think this is something that you guys need to just bring back to us to decide. I don't care what that number is. That number could be, you know, you could go back and say, yeah, they're crazy, they're, wait till they see this number. But we really have to weigh that out with what is the value in doing that, and then amortize that cost with the value.
We'll do.
So that's going to be very interesting to see, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we're back on slide nine, just to continue with the discussion. So the monthly targets is, again, it's a regime, it's a, and that, that monthly target moves with the capacity, the combined capacity of both Lake Corpus Christi and Cho Canyon Reservoir. So like Councilman Pussley was describing, if we're above 70% combined capacity for the entire year, the targeted inflow or pass-through, excuse me, pass-through amount would be 138,000 acre feet of water. And then it, and then it decreases as the percentages decrease, all the way to the point where just recently, we were, we were below, in between, below 30, or excuse me, below 40, moving towards 30% combined capacity. So the targeted amount for each of the months was 100, excuse me, 1,200 acre feet for a total of 14,000 acre feet of water. And then, if it dropped below 30%, we wouldn't have to pass any water for environmental So, and this is going to be a little hard to see, but y'all have on your, in your hands the presentation, but I want to really kind of direct you to the, the numbers for 2022 at the bottom. So the, the inflows match the pass-through amounts, and you can see how low they are. In July, it was 43, and then 27 for February, and then 16, and then 30. And then we had rain come in in May, and the numbers bounced up, but then in June, and that kind of coincides when we declared Stage 1, it was zero. And then in July, we did have some inflows come in, and it was back to 31. So you can, it matches the conditions of the environment that it is happening in. So we're going through a tough year, drought kind of year, it's reflected in the inflows, therefore it's reflected in what the bay and estuaries would see. So it's mimicking the system.
Keep it, I asked, I asked Esteban to put the slide together because this is really the story, this is probably the best slide in the presentation. So the blue is what we by the Agreed Order would release if it was raining.
The target for-
The target, right. See, the blue bars, January, February, March, May, June, a wetter month, so more rain, I mean, more water would be discharged. What you can barely see is the orange, which is what you actually pass through.
Exactly.
You can see only in May is it really, can you see it? It's so small in January, February, March, there was zero in June, and 31 was passed through in July. So the story of this chart is, the order says to do one thing if it's raining, if it's not raining, and if we have credits and all that other stuff, what actually is released is that orange bar, or you can see the numbers in the pass-through row, is, it's a minuscule amount compared to what we would otherwise release. So this is a real good chart.
So to, and this has always been, again, a very interesting system for our entire community. So we work with the Noasis River Authority to be our third party to kind to post this information on a daily basis. I work with my team both at Cho Canyon and Lake Corpus Christi and the Noasis River Authority personnel to post these to their website. It's a good report, it's a passive report, anybody in, can go to their website, download, look at it, and it gives the most updated information for each of our reservoirs, both Cho Canyon, Lake Corpus Christi, and then the combined amount, and we also have information regarding Lake Texana. On this, to get this, we have to have a robust information gathering system. So we work with the USGS on gathering information, and I bring that contract each year to y'all and get that approved, where we work with the USGS on the monitoring unit. So as you can see- So you, as you can see, there are approximately six gauges that we gather all this information up into our passer report. On that second half, on this next slide, slide 13, on the, on this half of the passer report, is the information pertaining to the, the pass-throughs that we're discussing here today. In addition, it literally, it shows you the gauges under the, the gauge station information, it names it, and it also gives you both that, what's happening the day before, and to the month, and then it calculates everything. And then at the very bottom of that, we do, we show the estuary inflow and pass-through requirements. So it labels, it shows you the monthly target. If there is a salinity relief credit, it gives you the, it shows you the number there, and then on the right-hand side, it kind of calculates everything towards the bottom of what we would do, either have a pass-through surplus, like we've, there is a surplus amount that has gone to the bay and, bay and estuaries, or there's a deficit at that moment in time. And it's kind of, we're, we're tracking this on a daily basis, but it's a monthly target. So we try to, or we, we work towards the end of the month, and literally into the next two weeks of the following month to pay for our pass, to make sure we've passed through all what have come in on the month before. I know it's kind of complicated, I know there's a lot of moving targets, but that's kind of how the system of us calculating, accounting for everything works. And we use, again, we use the Oasis River Authority as our transparency, as our third party to ask questions, to make sure that we're on the right track. So kind of the, the takeaways of the discussion, you know, the, the state established an environmental flow restriction that we're, we're trying to meet. The passer requirements was, was based and modified several times since 1976. We have a monitoring system that we use the USG, USGS gauges in the river basin to keep track of the inflows and the stream flows, and we do this on a daily, daily basis through the passer report, which anybody and everybody can look at, at the Oasis River Authority's website. Some kind of frequently asked questions we get all the time. This is good for the downstream environment, the agreed order. The agreed order protects the city, again, and the region in times of drought, because it adjusts what the real conditions of the situation are. And then we also, we look at, why do I see water passing over Cal Island Dam? Again, it's trying to educate in, with the community on the, how we transport water. So we're releasing water for municipal, industrial, and all of our needs at our homes and businesses, to our Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. That water can also potentially meet, because water's flowing down through the sky, below the Cal Island Dam, and over that Cal Island Dam can also meet our targeted amounts for that month. So there's a lot of moving numbers that are going around, and, and me and my team, we monitor it on a daily basis. We work with, again, the Oasis River Authority and USGS, I was just on the phone with them, talking, talking this whole thing out just yesterday. So it, it's a, it's a complex but dynamic system that is trying to create it, and create it under this agreed order. And I sign by for any more questions.
I don't see any questions, Esteban.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, I, back up there one slide, Esteban, in, in your comment, and I understand when you say that the agreed order protects the city, I understand that, is, you know, but what we, what we should say is, so that the general public understands that the agreed order, as it was modified in 2001, keeps the city from having to release water it doesn't need to release, because of the estuaries and back bays. True?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of the same.
It's, I know you're saying the same thing, but.
Yes.
People need to understand, when you say it's to protect the city, that, that's not gonna make people happy. I can assure you. So, the, the education process of this is extremely important for this city. Many people are extremely confused, and don't understand how this process works, and how complex it is. And those charts you bring up, that are from the Oasis River Authority, people are not gonna read those.
Yeah.
They're complicated to read. I mean, and, and you're, all they, all they care about is when they see water going over that dam at Cal Island, in their mind, we're releasing water for the shrimp. And many times, that's not the case. And so, Peter, I just say, in, in the future, we need to do a better job of educating the public on why we do what we do, and, and the orders in which we live under, to try to create an environment where people have a better understanding of what we're doing. Because you can't do this in engineering terminology, you, you know, you lose them in the first 30 seconds of the conversation.
Exactly.
And I really want to take, and thank y'all, especially the mayor and others, for giving me a potential of bringing on some new help in doing that. That goes to what we've been discussing along this whole month, is the water conservation plan and assisting in that communication. So that's one of the tasks, I was talking to Maria Corona, who's my right-hand on this, getting out there more and working with our local schools, educating. Again, I offer to any one of y'all, if y'all are having a presentation, invite me. I'd love to talk about water, love to introduce this, this idea of both protecting our municipal supply, and working with the ecosystem that we all enjoy, and how they go hand in hand.
Yeah, and, and this falls right under the conservation plan. The education, the, the choice of words, that kind of thing. And, and yes, Esteban, every person up here, we have to change that. It is also our responsibility. It is not just about saying, Peter, go make this conservation plan look wonderful, and let's, you know, figure it out, you want more people, okay, we'll hire you more people to implement. We have a responsibility. Every person up here has one section of this city, one section. And then, of course, the three have the at-large, and I have at-large, but if we had nine people, can you imagine?
Can you imagine?
Five people focused just on, every time they speak to their constituent base, they bring this up. Every time an at-large goes around the city talking about whatever, they bring up water. We could make an impact that is tremendous. So we have to do it together, but I'm still, you know, to Councilman Pusley's point, the, this goes right into that conservation plan, in terms of how do we explain it, what choice of words do we use, so that the public understands, you know, the meaning behind all of this.
And to go along that, Esteban, underneath, why do we see water moving over the Cal Island Dam, there needs to be another bullet point there that says, to replenish our supplies at the Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. That's a very important, because many times, that's the only reason there's water going over that dam. Correct?
The, the intake is actually before the dam.
Yeah.
The intake is before the dam, so really, that's why I hesitated on the, I'm sorry, hesitated on the green with it, because if water for releases to the Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant, and we're seeing that go over the dam, Owen Stevens Water Treatment intake had an issue. Because on a daily basis, they even, that's why it's even a complex situation, they're calling my guys at Lake Corpus Christi and requesting water. So there's a lot of communication that happens behind the scenes to supply water to the city. And so, we're calculating that, we're looking at the inflows below the dam, so that we don't want to release too much of the water that we've stored in that good time.
So that you can't suck it up faster than it goes over the Cal Island Dam.
Yeah, and then that water that has fallen below the dam itself, is the, should be one of the major reasons why water's flowing over the Cal Island Dam. So it's a lot, and it's a timing thing, too, because they ask for releases, and that's a, that's approximately 38 hours before they, Owen Stevens can divert that water. And in between that, it could have rained, and that you've already released that water, and so there's a lot of communication, there's a lot of looking at what rainfall will come, and it's on a daily basis, and the guys are, oh, we need to make adjustments, we make the adjustments. If, if Owen Stevens has an issue with their pumps, you know, that's a situation where we could get caught in the water going over the Cal Island Dam that was released for our beneficial needs, but we try to keep that to the lowest possible happenance. You know, that, that is something I don't want to see, and we work for that not to happen.
And, and we appreciate that very much. I did, like I said, I did issue some questions, I know it was just yesterday, so when you, when you have a chance, if you can send those, and, and Peter, you can share those with the rest of the council, too.
Okay, well, there were questions, just for the council's benefit.
And I appreciate y'all putting this on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely, Councilman.
I, I told everybody who, that complains about this all the time, you know, if you have something to say, today's your day to be here, and I don't see any of them, so.
Right. Yeah, Councilman Pusley, thank you for putting this on, I've, it helped me get better educated on it, and it's pretty complex, as Esteban said, but we will, we, we will try to do some educational, simple stuff to understand, put it on our website, we have a pretty exhaustive website, so, and then the order's probably on there, but we need to boil it down to non-engineering, you know.
Yeah, at, at EOG, we would have the engineers write a report, and then they would give that to our public relations people, and they would trim it down to where people can understand.
Exactly, we'll do the same thing.
Okay.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you, I, I just want to thank Councilman Pusley for bringing this up, and we were in a workshop the other day, and he said this is a very important thing, and there's, you know, very few know the details, so it's a good briefing, and Councilman Pusley, thank you for asking this to be put on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Esteban, I think that's all.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley, your light's on.
You're, it's okay, it's all right, it's okay.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you for, for the presentation, information, and being here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are gonna go ahead and go on to Section N, which is the first reading ordinances, Items 10 through 13. So an ordinance, item number 10 is an ordinance approving an amendment to the downtown tax increment reinvestment zone number three, project and financing plans approved by the Board of Directors of Reinvestment Zone Number Three.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Heather Hurlbrook, Director of Finance. So this is an amendment to the project and financing plan for TERS number three, which is our downtown TERS. Our project and financing plan is a living, breathing document, and so we are making changes to it as conditions require or new programs. And so what this is, is that our, what was called our new tenant commercial finish-out grant program, which is the second program under our financing plan, what we were finding is that this didn't limit it to new tenants only, and it did not allow for anyone who owned a building to be able to utilize this program for any type of finish-out of that building. And so, this was brought to the TERS board at the end of June, and so what we are proposing, what was approved by the TERS board, was that we remove the new tenant language, and so this would just be a commercial finish-out program. And then the only limitation would be that if it is an owner-occupied business, that they must have been established for at least 10 years, and evidence of that operation must be provided before, along with the application. So it just broadens this program a little bit to be able to be used for not only new tenants, but also owner-occupied businesses, too, buildings. So, that concludes my discussion, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Heather, do we have any questions, gentlemen? All right, any, anyone in the public that would like to ask a question on item number 10? No questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Who seconded?
I'll go third.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. Item number 11 is an ordinance authorizing execution of all documents necessary to accept, amend, and appropriate a grant contract for the infectious disease prevention and control unit COVID grant from the Texas Department of State Health Services.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So yes, this, this grant is one of the grants that we used to have in, on the county side. We worked together with the city, and with the state, to bring this county over to the city. So this grant specifically, specifically for infectious disease control, and it allows 19 different grant-funded positions associated with this particular grant. So what this does is allows us to fight, and continue to fight against COVID by providing vaccine sites, vaccine allocations, and as such. The, the total grant that we're bringing over is in the amount of 951,000. I'll take any questions.
Mayor, can we do 11 and 12 at the same time?
12 is another grant that is under the same.
I mean, we can't. Sure, I mean, you don't have to present on either one, or we can just vote on both quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, 11 and 12. That's fine, okay, do we have any questions? You, you guys don't have questions, clearly. Anyone in the public have any questions on item number 11 or 12? Public comment, I'll close public comment.
Move to approve.
And I'm gonna read item number 12, so that people know what we're voting on. Item number 12 is ordinance authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to accept, amend, and appropriate a grant contract for the health disparities grant from the Texas Department of State Health Services. So we are approving item, two grants, item number 11 and 12. We have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
So, why are grants listed as an ordinance?
Because it's an appropriation, Councilmen, so appropriations, where council has to appropriate money, that requires two readings.
It's required, an ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I just wondered.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? The motion carries, yes. Oh, you're calling him. Item number 13 is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 9 Aviation, Section 9-54, pertaining to landing fees at the Corpus Christi International Airport by revising the landing weight for aircraft subject to a landing fee from 12,500 to 6,000 pounds. Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and city leaders. Yeah, so this ordinance is something that, this ordinance change is something that's gonna help us tremendously capture the landing fees that we're currently not capturing. I was sitting in my office the other day and saw 727 going by to Atlantic Aviation, and I called the manager over there, I said, what's 727 doing? And he said, they got cargo, they're dropping off over here. And we don't even know that plane landed, and, and nobody collects landing fees, because the FBO gets the fuel, they, they, they capture their revenue off of fuel. And so, this, this system is, it's been about 36 airports throughout the country, and it's just a really great way to track who's landing at our airport. It also double-checks our commercial airlines, American, Southwest, and United, to make sure they're reporting accurately as well. So, overall, it's gonna generate about 139,000 worth of new revenue. It will not affect the based aircraft, so the people that have their, their homes, you know, in Corpus Christi and have their airplanes at our airport, it will not affect them, and it also will not affect the under 6,000 pounds, so the small Cessna 172s.
And Mr. Smith, did, this just didn't exist before?
Correct.
For what reason, we don't?
Well, the technology is fairly new. The FAA just required, what was it, about two years ago? 2020, all, all aircraft over 6,000 pounds to have this certain antenna on it, and that's where we get the information from.
Oh, I see, I see. Councilman Hunter. Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
And Councilman Pusley.
So Kevin, if the, what about, at the FBOs, the operators of like, the small jets and those things, are they gonna be subject to this fee?
No, sir, we've already got their tail numbers in the system, so they won't even be tracked.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you. Do you see any landings that wouldn't take place, because now we're becoming, watching a little tighter, so to speak?
I don't think so. We, we actually sent letters out to all the aircraft owners that landed here over the last 12 months, advising them of this change, and we haven't been contacted by any of them. It's, it's pretty common now at all the airports in Texas that are doing something like this. And just to give you an example, a Cessna caravan. And just to give you an example, a Cessna caravan is 8,500 pounds, seats 15 people. The landing fee's only going to be $28.72.
And there's still 727s in the air?
Is that not unbelievable? It didn't have any livery on it, so we're not sure who flew it.
No telling.
But we will know coming up.
Interesting.
So this will actually go into effect September 1st if it's approved. They'll start billing on our behalf for the September landings in October.
So Greg, your plane will be okay?
Okay.
Yeah, it will.
Your 6,000-pound Cessna.
Well, I'm in that drone that I bought at Hobby Lobby. But I want to take this opportunity too to thank you both for the proclamation today, the terrific job that this airport did servicing those other folks with it. So, those that missed the earlier ceremony today, our airport went above and beyond the call of duty when some flights were diverted from Houston and taking care of them, where most airports are putting them in jail and running them through the strip search. Our airport was feeding them pizza and welcoming them to Corpus Christi, so thank you very much, staff.
Wonderful team, we're very proud of you. And this is a very good news item, too.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Yes, yes. Okay, so open public comment. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make comment on item number 13? Okay, there being none, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion to approve item 13.
Move.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last item of the day are our port commissioners and a briefing, but I see we have one. Okay. And then that's it, Peter, we don't have an executive session item?
No executive session, Mayor. So this is the final item, is the briefing by the port commissioners.
Is it? There it is.
The lunch is there.
Well, I'm thinking maybe we.
You could break if you wanted to.
Go break and do a quick lunch meanwhile they get here.
Okay.
Let's do that.
That sounds great.
Someone said they're coming, but.
Yeah, do you know their ETA, Dave? Sorry? Do you know their ETA?
I just left them, they're all driving. I just saw, in fact, I don't know where they, he left before I left. It's been five minutes.
Yeah.
Well, not really, but actually, we're hungry. We're a hungry commissioner, but.
Let David start.
What do y'all want to do?
Let David start.
Yeah.
Let David start.
That might be them. Yes, it is. There they are.
They broke, they broke for lunch. Are y'all breaking for lunch?
No, no.
You're not? Okay, good.
How we doing?
I'm just glad I wasn't driving over it when that happened. No, it's.
We couldn't get Ross out.
I'll tell you about that later.
It's my skin color.
I didn't say that.
I did.
Really?
He won't let me go through?
Really?
Who's calling the mayor?
Well.
She went to go get Ross out.
That's hilarious.
Councilman, how are y'all?
What is going on today? Why is it so quiet in here? What time did y'all start? What time did you start?
Thank you.
11:30?
I think you guys need to go have lunch, how about 1:30, we wrap it up?
Well, if they're hungry, that's good. If they're hungry, that's a good thing. Well, the mayor walked out to go get you.
No, she didn't.
She didn't?
Nobody cares about me.
So anyway, how do you fix that? Have you seen it? It went all the way to the bottom.
Right.
I think it's an old bridge. Do you have any money?
Hello, Gil. How are you?
You're going to take a donation? Hi, Gil. How are you? Sorry?
Good to see you.
Not got anyone? My lights are down, I go, what's going on here?
Well, no.
We drove down there and we go, oh.
Nobody went back to get something.
I guess it washed out from Monday night is what happened.
Snack?
Fun and everything. I'll let each of you know.
Silly season again, right?
Yeah, it is at that.
We were ready.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, it is, okay. What number is this? Eight? Yeah. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Commissioner? Hello. Good, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and, this is under Section J, briefings. Item number eight is an update from our port city appointees on the Port of Corpus Christi.
We have a presentation. Hopefully.
Do they know?
And you have a hard copy.
We do have a hard copy.
We're not going to spend a lot of time on it, but just to kind of give you a brief executive summary. Did we get it up? If not, just turn to the executive summary, okay? I think you all know, I'm David Engel. I live here in Corpus Christi since 1973, almost makes me a native. Grew up in Victoria, Texas. The port financially, from every aspect, is doing very well. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that we have been very fortunate to live in an area that, in the state of Texas, that has been very attractive to industry moving to this area. And all of these numbers that we see in this executive summary and all the pages before it, it reflective of the customers and the employees that work for those customers and all the products that they're moving to and from the Port of Corpus Christi. And the other day at our commission meeting, I made sure that, to point out that we have a great staff. Their job is to take care of the customers, and we've got great customers who are driving these numbers. So when you say the Port of Corpus Christi, it's not just the Port of Corpus Christi, it's a channel with lots of customers moving commerce in and out of this area for the state of Texas and for the United States of America. And the amount of being the number one port exporter of crude is quite an accomplishment. Again, it's pipelines coming to this area and the infrastructure to move those ships in and out. The, and being the third largest port in the United States by tonnage, that's something for us to be all very proud of, and I know I am as a commissioner. And the thousands of jobs that are being created in this area, and as I said the last time I was here, the millions of dollars in revenues, tax revenues that are going to the cities and the counties in this region is phenomenal, which helps pay for that bridge on Amistad that just collapsed. Just saying, just saying, there's a bridge there that's collapsed, but it pays for all these great city improvements that y'all are making with streets, sewers, utilities, et cetera. And it's not just here in Corpus Christi, it's literally from Port Aransas all the way to the inner harbor. It's, all the communities are benefiting from this, and it's pretty phenomenal. In my almost 50 years here, I have never, ever seen anything like what's going on in the economy in this area as we see it today. And I'm just hoping that we continue to see it grow. In fact, I know it's going to continue to grow. So, that's my response in regards to the financials. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer, and I know there's more to the presentation, so we'll come back. So I know that my fellow commissioners here have some other points they want to make.
Well, who's going to take us through this presentation?
Well, we are, we're doing it together.
Where, did we start on page?
Well, I did, I just started with the executive summary. I mean, I think, I just started with the executive summary, and basically, I think it speaks for itself. If you want me to go page by page, I'll be happy to. Is that what you want?
Yeah, go do it.
I don't know who's in charge here.
Well, no one's in charge, we're just here together as a team.
It's a briefing?
It's a briefing.
So I would ask that we start with page one?
If you'd like that, be happy to.
And then go on to page two and three and four and five.
We can do that. I was trying to be more efficient here. See, I don't know if I have it in the right order. Okay. Page one shows the amount of tons moved in, from 2015 to 2021. It shows us being the number one crude report, crude oil export gateway, second largest in LNG exports, third largest in total US waterway tonnage, and number one in revenue tonnage. Page two, if you look at that graph, you can see how the oil export numbers have grown over the years. So it starts in January, I'm sorry, it starts in 2016 through 2022. And over that period, you can see that we've gone from basically nothing to, again, to being the number one crude exporter in the country. If you look at our financials, we're looking at the EBITDA, which is basically our net income, less depreciation, and you can see the count of numbers that we're generating in operating revenue and EBITDA. It also has the tonnage numbers on that page. Let's see what else is on there. Page two.
Oh.
Okay, this page, right here, that page that's up there. The graph. Below it, it has an executive summary. If you look at the page, you see the answer. Okay, look at slide four, go to slide four. There you go. Yeah. Okay? Again, it's operating revenue, you can see that in 2020, the fourth quarter, it looks like it's a higher number, or it looks like the same. Oh, thank you. Go to, let's go to the next page, I think I covered, I covered it. I covered page four. Okay, let's go to page four. Year-to-date tonnage is up 12% from the prior year. Year-to-date EBITDA exceeds budget by 32%, in the same period last year by 16.3%. Our inbound railcar movements mainly because of several things. One, the refined products going to Mexico is less than it has been in the past, and also our grain shipments are down. So rail is a little bit under budget, and you can see in capital spending for the year versus prior year, our capital spending budget is slightly less than what we had projected, and it's just basically a matter of timing. We do expect to spend that money this year. Going to page five. Again, it's just the same information, just in a different format, different graphs. Fourth quarter 2020 is a little bit of a, it's kind of an outlier just because there were some dredging revenues that were in that number, but you can see the steady growth of the port over the last two years. EBITDA, same thing, total tonnage, you can see that we've setting new records on total tonnage, both first quarter and second quarter. And then again, our capital expenditures are a little less than what we budgeted. We had budgeted by this time this year to be about 82 million, we're about 26 million, but I do know there are things that are in the pipeline where some of those dollars will be spent before year-end. EBITDA is earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and amortization. It's really net income if you really want to look at it that way, but without depreciation. And.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask a question on that?
Sure, absolutely.
Are those numbers cumulative, or is that, like, did you, the second quarter 2022, there's 28 million in income? Is that how you read that? On top of the 25 million in the prior quarter?
You have the EBITDA?
No, that's correct.
Right?
That's just quarter.
That's right, that's just for the quarter.
Right, so for the, for the two quarters in 2022, you have, what is that, 50? 43 million?
Yeah.
53, isn't it?
53.
53 million in excess revenue.
Well, I wouldn't say excess revenue, in net income.
Net income.
Yes, yes.
Revenue that's, after all your expenditures are taken care of.
Yeah.
You have 53 million in.
We don't pay taxes.
Yes, sir, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that page?
Councilman Lerman, do you have a question on this? No? Okay.
Okay. All right, the next slide is yours.
Yes.
Okay, I'll let you.
Yes, go ahead.
Good.
And maybe it's very early in the game, but with respect to the new, newly passed federal legislation on the, that's coming down, they put a lot of stuff in there to basically try to curtail hydrocarbon production as much as they could, so have y'all had an opportunity to look at that and see how it's going to impact your business? Or is it too early?
Well, first of all, we don't think it is going to impact our business.
Okay.
We think that because of what's going on in the world, that the amount of oil and gas it's necessary to supply, not just the United States, but the rest of the world, we see no tapering off. We don't, there's nothing from our customers that are telling us that there's any curtailment.
Okay.
But part of that bill, though, as you know, is addressing things like green hydrogen and ammonia and carbon capture. And we are, we are working hard to hopefully facilitate that happening in our area, a lot of that happening in our area. In fact, I'm pretty confident it will.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and the Councilmen. It's good to be here again. I want to let you guys know, and I don't know if I say it enough, or I ever said it, that I'm proud of you guys running this town like you have. The improvements I see everywhere and we see everywhere, my friends see everywhere, it's just amazing, and I think, I think in my 35 years of being here in Corpus, it's the best I've ever seen. So, I'm proud of you guys. Actually, I'm also very involved, so I see a lot more and I feel a lot more.
Thank you.
And I've been here 35 years, and I love it, not going anywhere, anytime soon. I know this is a hot topic always, the D cell. I just want you two guys to know, we want to reiterate that all of us on the commission are 100%. I never say 110% because there's no such thing as 110%. It's 100% for the city to be the D cell plant builder, whatever the city wishes to do. It's city's prerogative, it's your decision. We are, have never wanted to be, and if we give any indication, we're sorry, but we are, we are, we are in full, full support of the city. And anything we can do to make that happen, we are not just willing, but obligated to do. So we are, we are in your, in your, on not your side, I always say, not your side, it's also our side, we are the city as well. With that, as you well know, the current discharge permit being sought for by the port on, for the Harbor Island D cell facility is quite a bit along the way. The ALJ recommended granting of the permit to TCEQ a couple of months ago, under certain conditions. And on September 7th coming up in a couple of weeks, we have a hearing in front of the TCEQ commissioners to consider that discharge permit. And that's the latest update on our discharge permit for the Harbor Island facility. That doesn't mean that we're moving forward with building it. As we have promised you, it's on the back burner, in case it's needed down the road, but it is on the back burner. We're not having any discussions. I know, I know the staff is meeting with some other, some people, and that's, I think it's a good thing to do. We are, I am a part of the long-range planning committee. The meetings go on, the learning goes on, but no decision, no contracts, no, nothing are being done. We're just learning through it, they're learning through it. I think the, the more time we take to learn, the possibilities, without committing ourselves to anything, the better. We are like in any other business.
Commissioner, who are you referring to when you say meeting with people?
So as you well. So as you well, you all know, we had a meeting with seven seats. I think, I think we disclosed that. And, and I was part of that meeting. And we just heard as to what they were, they were showing possibilities. I, I don't have the thing in front of me and I don't remember a whole lot. But we just listened and no decisions were made, no commitments were made, just a part of the process, that's all. And hopefully, you know, if we ever have, if we ever have any, any thing we can discuss with any of you guys, and we know something, we'll certainly be part of the, part of the team. It's a, it's a team, it's always a teamwork. The other couple of things we talked about was the water rights permit. The Port Commission approved a resolution in May 2022 to place intake in the Gulf of Mexico. I think that doesn't affect anybody. And then on the La Quinta D cell, the discharge permit is pending PCCAS. We need to provide more additional information to TCEQ. We're waiting results of additional modeling and completion before we provide that. But that's, I think that's a long ways away also. And the TCEQ Commission for the water rights permit in the La Quinta, the TCEQ just a couple of weeks ago granted a contested case hearing to a couple of contestants. And again, nothing solid. We're looking forward, we're really looking forward to TCEQ getting on with the city permit and, and hopefully quickly get into it and approve it. On the heels of what they have learned from the process of this current permit, because this is all brand new to them also. And hopefully that will be much, much, much faster than the permit that we've been involved And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilman Lerman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a couple of questions on, on the D cell, which I'm, I don't know if you, if you gentlemen know the answer or not, but my question is, have you had an EPA review? And if so, what were the findings on that review?
So, from what I know, it's not the EPA that approves, it's the EPA has granted that authority down to TCEQ to approve. So it's in front of TCEQ right now to approve.
Okay. Do they have any kind of findings on a review that they gave the permits?
So because of, because it went to ALJ, the admission law judges last year. So TCEQ is looking for the ALJ to find their findings, which they have last year. And, and again, they modified those findings just about a month or two ago. And with their findings, they're reporting to TCEQ and TC, and they have recommended to TCEQ to grant the permit under certain conditions that have to be met. And.
And those conditions are?
They're all not, not bad at all. One of them is the, the stickiest one, and we think we can handle that also, is that your, your ambient chloride in water in this area is, I think about, if you correct me wrong, around 35 to 40 parts per thousand. TC, ALJ recommended that it should be no more than two parts per thousand more than the ambient, at least 100 meters away from the discharge point. So as you may or may not know, the ambient salinity changes within a few PPT anyway. And if during our results, we find out that it's, we cannot get it down to two, we have to get it down, that it's, it's four or three, we can always reduce the production of the saltwater, oh, sorry, the freshwater. So there's less saline water going out in the discharge and handle that. That's manageable. But again, that's a long ways away.
Right.
If we ever get there.
Okay. My other question is, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm real happy that you gentlemen are here saying that, you know, we're working on all this together. This is a united front city and, and, and the port on working for a D cell. So my next question is, when you receive your permit, or permits, will you, or prior to that, will you recommend on passing a resolution that you will hand those permits over to the City of Corpus Christi?
So remember, I am one guy on the port.
I know, I know.
So the general consensus, the general consensus among all the Port Commission is to get the permit and let's all work together to see how we can make water for this area. Now.
I agree.
We, I think, I think our goal should be water for the area. Port really doesn't want to. We, we're not in the water distribution business or, and that's city, right?
Right.
What, what we would all like to see is the water get done, right? The water gets produced, right?
I agree.
If it means that the city's ready, here's the plan, permit is here, here you go, that can happen, right? Or if the permit stipulates that you can hand it over to another entity, that's a possibility, right? But we really don't know what the stipulation of the permits would be. And I think when we have the permit, we should all sit down and talk again. And I think our goal is all together, okay? Let's get the permit and let's see what it says.
I agree.
And we move forward with it.
No, I agree. But my, my question is not basically to the entire commissioners. I'm talking about my, my three commissioners that are standing here before me.
Right.
Will you recommend that we, that you pass a resolution to hand them over to the City of Corpus Christi? That was my question.
Today, I cannot answer that question because either the answer is neither yes or no.
Thank you. No other question, Mayor?
Great.
Councilman Pesley?
Yeah, I wanted to ask real quickly about the La Quinta D cell permit you guys have been working on. And I'm not sure I understand everything that TCEQ told you guys, but when it goes to a contested case, I guess that means you're going to have to give a lot more information over some period of time to TCEQ to try to get. I've talked to at least one other Port Commissioner, not you three guys, that said that there has been some discussion about maybe it may not be worth the time and effort to do that. So from your perspective, where do you think you go from here with your La Quinta permit?
So the only thing that we were talking about, the contested case hearing is for the water rights permit, as to the pull the water from the La Quinta Channel.
Right.
The discharge permit, we're still working on providing more information to TCEQ. And this is really the first time we've talked about La Quinta in our meetings.
Yeah.
There's has been no discussions in the year and a half I've been on it.
Okay. Do you think there's a probability that you might do, withdraw from that?
No indication.
No indication of that?
We're not even, we're not even.
So your, so your contested hearing case now is just specifically on the intake?
Oh, no, only intake, yes, sir.
And, and you have not, have the port filed for a discharge permit yet, or you're still working on it?
We have not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Smith?
I'm sorry, I'll say that, Councilman Pesley, I think we have filed, but we're spending more information to TCEQ for them to consider.
Well, thank you all very much for taking your time to come down here. I appreciate you reiterating that the permits are for Corpus Christi with it. Now, moving on on La Quinta, that of course, we're there and we all know TCEQ has X amount of staff time. So the more permits that are out there, the slower everything takes. And you, you look at the La Quinta permit, you're adjacent to a residential area. Where we're going, we're surrounded by industry on there. You're in a lower circulation area, we're in a higher circulation. I know, speaking for myself, I would sure appreciate the port telling TCEQ to put ours ahead of yours.
Okay.
With it, as, as we're working together as a team on there. Another thing, going through your financials, boy, do you all know how to make money or what? Man, you know, the, the City of Corpus Christi, we're cost of service. So when we look at things, we look at it with a little bit different glasses on there. I'm looking at $190 million in revenue and $80 million in operating expense, you know, 50% margins. I mean, you, all, all the business, wow, on there. But one thing that stuck out a little bit, and you know, this was just a thought, I'm not, don't expect a response or anything else, but $80 million of your operating expense, your professional fees went up 35%, and they represent 17% of your total operating fees. And I'm going, whoo, if, if that was the City of Corpus Christi, I mean, that'd be $170 million. So you ought to have a lot of happy professionals, lobbyists, or, or whatever else. But then the last thing is here on council, we, we get a lot of calls and, and things like that. And one that we're getting very recently is the dredge placement and what it's doing. We, we know we're a world-class bay. We host both national, international, and all kinds of sailing regattas. And there's concern in that sailing community about that dredge placement. And, and this is something I would surely, from my side, appreciate the Port of Corpus Christi working with our sailing community on there. And they, their biggest concern is with the north wind coming out there with that placement on there. I'm assuming that's on y'all's bottom. And then on that same kind of line with it, you're, you're dredging and necessarily so the, the channel deeper, dredging it right now on there. Well, there's a, lack of a better word, a canyon that's developed, and this is on the City of Corpus Christi's bottom, that comes across the Lex with it. So if you look at bathymetric studies on there, you know, it's working its way into that D channel. And we've had issues also with the Lex, concerned about the stability of the Lex. So now we, we get the bigger, better, more revenue ships coming in there, and you can go out to North Beach and, and see that wave energy coming in and drawing back. And so being cognizant of, you know, their, their things, unintended consequences and stuff like this, so the City of Corpus Christi's bottom could be directly affected by the port's actions with it. Now, I'm not saying anything in here that, you know, a bottom's a bottom on there, but it's just, but we're all part of the greater, greater community.
No, I totally agree with that. If that is any even a mild concern, we need to know that immediately, and the staff needs to know that immediately. Can you have somebody fire an email to the staff immediately?
Well, I would suggest you all get, tell your staff to get with the sailing community, that, that's really not.
We will do that. We will do that.
Y'all are down there all the time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, before we move on, Councilman mentioned prioritizing the city's permits, which all three of you have had a conversation with me.
Right.
About that, and obviously other council members.
Right.
So, so where, where are you with that? Because we've all talked about that. And, and you've all said yes. You, you've said it five times today.
I agree. No, is, are you, are you trying to, Mayor, are you trying to say prioritizing over the current Harbor Island permit?
Prioritizing what Greg just said, which was.
Over La Quinta?
La Quinta, yeah.
We, we have had no discussions on that, but I don't see, you know, what everybody's approval. I don't see why we can't do that.
Yeah, we, we have, but prioritizing in period, we, we've had that discussion. The three of you know very, very well, the three of you. If you don't, then we've got real problems. You know very well where this council stands. And prioritizing, we, we, if you are saying we are working towards the same goal, which I believe you all recognize that, and you are saying.
Right.
What we have been saying and know and is factual, that we are the water distributor, we are the water planner, we are the water, all of that.
Right.
Then yes, what Greg just said is absolutely true.
That is, we're okay with that.
Is prioritizing to the TCEQ.
Right.
Because now you've got more traffic.
Right.
I spoke to one of your colleagues, another commissioner, and he himself told me the same thing. He agreed that yes, we are working with you. So that moving forward is working against us because it is yet another, it's another permit in, in the midst of all of this, right? And so we already have the two.
Mayor, I agree, I agree with you. I, I'm agreeing with you, we should prioritize your La Quinta permit. Well, I have a discussion about that, and we're not against that, okay? It's the, it's, it's, if it has anything to do with the Harbor Island and prioritizing over that, we're almost on the 11th, on, on the, almost to get it. I think we should continue to let that one go through.
No, no, I'm, no, no, it's not. Right, it's, it's, it's La Quinta, yes.
I just want to make sure that we're together on that.
And so that's very, and it's very simple.
Yeah.
It's, it's TCEQ knowing that we are working together.
Yes. I think we should tell, tell them that.
And.
And prioritize the city's permit.
Prioritize the city's permit.
We're okay with that.
Because we are trying to move this forward, and I don't care who says what.
Right.
There, and I am in conversations with them.
Okay.
It is an issue.
Okay.
And so if you, as an entity, say, we're, you know, we, we're working together.
Right.
So we do want the city, this one's already floating down the river.
Right.
But this one, we need to make certain we all understand where we all sit.
Got it.
And I think it's a great, it's a great way to show in action what you've been saying for months. And I think it's, it would be fair.
Yep. Do you have any comments?
Any comments, gentlemen?
Again, this is, again, Mayor, with all due respect, I do not recall us having a conversation about prioritizing La Quinta, but I do think it's a great idea. And, and Councilman Smith, it's news to me on the Lexington, and I'm a former chairman of the Lexington. I know that Sean Shawbridge sits on that board, but I'll still check that out if that's an issue. And then again, what, what concerns me is, is that you, as council people, hear things that maybe we don't hear. And somehow the communication, when you hear something like that, if you could text me, call me, or just make us aware, or make our, make your staff aware to make our staff aware that there's a concern with the sailing community as an example, again, news to me. And, but I do think it's important that we know that so we can address it. And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention today. Thank you.
And we, as elected officials, we hear so much, you know, we're, we have 320,000 bosses.
I hear you. Yeah. I get it.
Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, who, who's contesting the water rights permit?
A couple of individuals.
I mean, but do you know the, the names of those organizations?
Do we have the names?
Encarnacion Serna and, and, um, Riverside Environmental Group.
Okay. I would imagine they're probably, they will contest our permits as well. Looking at this from perspective, I'd always hope that with whatever permits that you get, specifically Harbor Island, that if you did get those permits, you would work with us, you know, financially, in order to work together to build a D cell facility if, for whatever reason, we don't get ours and any, you know, any permits on our side. You know, we can all say that this isn't necessarily for industry or, you know, utilizing the sense that it's going to be water that's going to be potable, but we're doing it not for them, but because of them. Okay? So I don't want to, you know, I'm not hiding that fact that this is, you know, a lot of the reasons why we're getting this water is because we have a demand for it. And a lot of that demand is from industry, which is not a bad thing.
Right.
Right? It, it provides jobs for people here and a lot of your customers, right? So I think the port has a vested interest in D cell, and I think that's why, a lot of the reasons why you went ahead and, and started that process early on before the city, before the city did. So with that, specifically regarding Harbor Island, I don't think it's necessary with La Quinta, but with Harbor Island, if we don't, if we don't get theirs, would, would you be open to a, a joint effort with the city to help pay for the cost of that, of that D cell plant? Because it affects, I mean, it is primarily for a lot of your customers.
Yes, that's, that's been discussed over and over, and, and the answer is yes.
Okay, so by, and the reason I say that is by, by holding hands with this and having two entities provide the cost, cover some of those costs, I think it would reduce the cost to, to all of our customers. So I, I, I hope that, you know, and I've always been looking, anytime we brought up D cell, I've always talked about cost.
Right.
Right? And making sure we have the lowest possible cost for, for the end, for the end user.
Right.
So if that's the case, I, I think maybe we can work out something ahead of time. And I, I don't know, I guess Peter's not here, but, and I'll, I'll broach it with him directly.
Right.
On what we can do, what that would look like then, what would that partnership look like?
Right.
Or, you know, inter-local agreement or whatever that is. So I, I ask that you consider that. You know, I know the environment hasn't quite been. that. You know, I know the environment hasn't quite been conducive to that kind of partnership here recently.
Right.
But I think ultimately, we should, you know, get above that and see what's ultimately good for the ratepayer.
Yeah. But Councilman Hernandez, that's always the case. I've been doing this for a year now with you guys, and we've always said that. We've always said that, that we, let's form a partnership.
Okay. So in looking at that, I asked, like I said, I understand the environment hasn't always been, you know, friendly. But I ask that you look, look at, see what that would, what kind of partnership, what kind of thing that you can think of would be that. And I ask our staff to look at that as well, from that perspective. I wanted to ask you about dredging. Did you, do you, does the port own its own dredging equipment, or is it just a one-hundred percent contracted?
I think it's one-hundred percent contracted.
Okay. All right. Sorry, dredging came up for us at some other aspects. So we'll just, we'll see if you had your own dredging equipment.
Yep.
All right. Well, that's all I have for now. I'll circle back with you on other stuff. Thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how to start this, but this is a council, this is a question for one of our council members, and then I'll get back to y'all. I would like Councilman Smith to explain to me what he meant about the Lexington, North Beach, and wave action.
Okay. On the south side of the Lexington, you've got about three feet of water depth. You've got on the north side, depending on where you are, fifteen to sixteen feet undermining a little bit under the hull.
That's right.
With it. So it's, Councilman Pusley has spent a lot of time on coastal issues with it. So as you see that energy coming in, it's putting stresses on that hull with it. We, there's been talks before-
Oh, I know all about it. I just wanted to hear you say it.
Okay. Okay. So you're-
This is what created the entire prospecting of what to do with North Beach, was this exact issue, and the waves, and the beaches receding back into the water. And I am a former board member of the Lexington also. And just so that you know, if anybody said anything about you today, Commissioner, I was going to have your back. But I do got to bring this up because you have been on an island on a lot of the issues that we're discussing. You've been on an island by yourself for five years, fighting those same positions. I'm just going to leave it at that. But I will say, as a board member, this is what created our entire push towards North Beach. Part of the land was receding back in the ocean. We had to pay every two years two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or something like that to reestablish the beach, beachfront, or the mount, I don't know what the exact terms are. But I do remember that it was a pain. And that's what created the process, which we discussed, bringing down the Old Harbor Bridge to use as-
Reef.
Either a reef, or what we have out there at our marina. What's it called?
Breakwater.
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 And that was the entire process. So we have brought this up. And the last time that we did bring it up, me and another person were attacked because of it. And I don't like hearing that this hasn't been brought up. And I didn't like being the only person on the council that fought for this issue at the time. So that really, really upset me. And I just wanted to make sure that it has been brought up before, but a lot of us were ignored, probably because I was a twenty-six-year-old kid that didn't know what he was talking about. But the truth is, is that we discussed that for months, and we were thrown under the table and just ignored. But that has been brought up. We have brought it to the community, and a lot of us worked very hard to bring attention to it. But I'm just letting you know, it may not have reached you because we were ignored or thrown under the table.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Give me an idea of what you think might be able to be done. Tell, give us, give us some input here. Maybe we could have a separate meeting-
I think the breakwaters is the best idea. I think that saving some of that bridge wasted material when it's demolished, just throwing out a breakwater out there, I mean, the bridge ever gets done.
I was going to say, we got some time to work on that, I think.
But-
But that's a great idea. But you know, maybe-
We're using the ten thousand truckloads of sand that y'all had back in the day that you offered to the city that we did not accept. That was one of the reasons that you offered the ten thousand truckloads, was to help us with that issue in McGee Beach.
Maybe this could be a topic we do offline, but this is, this definitely has some, needs some thought, especially the, we definitely don't want to impact the Lexington. That-
Former City Commissioner Rick Valls did discuss this with us.
Okay. Well, it didn't make it to my desk, but that's okay.
No, it probably didn't.
But nevertheless, we'll bring it up to staff.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the questions. You want to go on?
Good afternoon, Council. I'll just say, I'm the current chairman of the Lexington Museum on the Bay, so-
Are you really?
Yes. So very, and I think we, I speak for everyone. We have an interest in protecting the asset. Certainly knows, we have Steve Banter there and his leadership that does an excellent job. And certainly within the interest, and I know David was intimately involved when they brought that in, well, we just need to get in the room and make sure that we're addressing that. And God knows, we've got other things like rust we've got to deal with on a constant basis. So if we've got to address this, you can believe that I'm going to do what I can to support the Lexington. So I'll just say, I was quiet back there, just waiting for that opportunity. The, going on with, with what the port is doing, I think the idea here, you see this portable learning lab to further STEM education. Many of you were able to, to see that firsthand. That is an integrated educational STEM component of the port, getting back into our communities. In fact, I know that our team, led by Rosada, has really worked hard to get this out there. It's designed to spark interest in science, technology, engineering. It's interactive, hands-on. It's a really great tool that we probably don't see in communities like ours. So we certainly support the educational aspect of what we're trying to do to create that STEM education with those ninety-seven thousand-plus jobs that support the regional economy. If you haven't seen that, please, what we might do is set up a timeframe to have you over and see that firsthand. But they're working with the schools and trying to get these interactive. And it's basically a, an old, what do you call it, shipping container, thank you, Peter, that basically has been retrofitted with great technology, interactive for, for young people. And it's a great way that our, because of the port's success, is bringing greater success and reaching out to our community. The conversation, Councilman Pusley, you just alluded to is, it's interesting that Senator Cruz and Senator Cornyn came within such a close timeframe of one another. And I can tell you firsthand, from what I've certainly read in financial reports, and certainly what we're hearing, is that renewable energy is certainly at the top of the current administration's priorities. And we are currently asking staff to help us under, better understand that. But the word on the street is that it's certainly making hydrogen and other renewable sources more financially attractive, is the right word, as Rajan knows, in the oil services industry. So we suspect, and certainly know that interest in the renewable side of the port is certainly something that continues to happen. And can't speak specifically to any of that, but the interests are certainly there in great, in big, in a big way. He visited the port, Senator Cruz, on August ninth. He had a briefing with staff on infrastructure projects. Certainly, he toured the inner harbor by boat and was able to see the assets firsthand. Was a great conversation. There was a press conference. The bridge was discussed. Interestingly enough, that was one of the questions they asked him. And Senator John Cornyn visited the Port of Corpus Christi on August seventeenth to discuss hydrogen-related legislation that he's spearheading personally. It would create programs with grants, low costs, supplemental loans to support hydrogen transport infrastructure. I'll just say this, with as much partisan politics that's playing out there, to have a Republican senator from the great state of Texas pushing hydrogen with some of his Democratic counterparts tells you a little bit about what might be happening. And as Councilman, you stated, in terms of the legislation, we should pay very close attention to that because as, as a deep-water port, it would have a tremendous impact here. As we can see, the only reason, you know, exports ban being lifted has really created the financial opportunity we have. But just like that, any administration can come in and make a change. So there's always a risk there, too. But at the end of the day, we want to be a part of that transition and participate there as well. Mayor, I know last minute, I wouldn't say last minute, you requested some, some information, and I've asked to get you the detail related to our community development, promotion and development funding. I'll just state a few things, and I've asked that get back over to you by email. But as you know, the areas of concentration for this five million dollars, it's been appropriated by budget for 2022. It starts in January through December first through December thirty-first. There are five areas of priorities: community, vitality, economic development, education and workforce development, healthcare and safety, sustainability and environmental. There are two call periods. Twice a year, port accepts funding requests. So the approval process is that the organization seeking funding will go online during the application period. They go through a rubric process to determine funding approval. And those approval recommendations are presented to the audit committee based on scoring. So there is a transparent process there, and, and a rigorous process that's been developed. So they have to provide proper documentation, but it's also their filings and satisfactory status and so forth. In terms of fairness and equitability, it's certainly a conversation to ensure that we're on, on all sides of the county that the port represents. So that is something that's looked at constantly, ensuring that we're equitable. And we certainly have those statistics as well. I won't provide the detail. But fortunately, we're in a position to be able to give back to our community. That's a good place to be. And again, I want to reiterate, there is a process in place, Mayor, that hopefully has, has a very quantitative and qualitative aspect to it in terms of, with these focus areas as well.
Yeah. And I was asking, so I would like for y'all to bring back or send back, along with, well, we've got a couple of things here, but who all received those disbursements in terms of your fiscal, your last fiscal year? What commitments do you have? Because you went up five, a million, correct?
We were able to increase that.
And how did that happen? I mean, what, what was the basis for that? Oh, it's, oh, so it went up because of the person-
It'll go up again this year based on our revenues.
I see. I see.
Basically, the legislation and water code provides, and there's certain parameters, there's certain things we can and cannot do. So we're trying to abide by the letter of the law and our capabilities, based in its revenue base as well, if I, that's correct. So.
And you said it was community vitality, economic development. What else was there?
Education and workforce development, healthcare and safety, sustainability and environmental.
Healthcare. I think there's one more in there.
Healthcare and safety, sustainability, and environmental.
Oh, environmental. Okay. Okay. And what months are those able to be applied for?
October first through thirty-first for the fall, April first through thirtieth for the spring.
Okay.
And we have, like I said, Mayor, additional data that shows and supports our efforts to try to make sure we're being equitable in all the communities we serve.
Okay. Councilman Smith.
Thank you. Gabe, you mentioned economic development on there. And the city of Corpus Christi, and the city of Corpus Christi's Water Department works very closely with the EDC. So when there's potential large volume water users coming in there, that our Water Department has visibility on that. Now, you mentioned hydrogen and other things that are big water consumers with it. Where is support as far as their own EDC type of outreach? I see Rosie and Omar out there, your staff, sitting there. The question from the city side is, are they potential users out there that if they don't go through the EDC, if they're working through the internal ports staff, we're unaware of it? So when we're trying to do our planning on there, the importance of that communication, what really is out there? What's a five-year, ten-year type of outlook? But like I said, I know that regional EDC works very closely with Corpus Christi Water. And, yeah.
And Greg, great question and point. My understanding, at least from the staff level, is that there's a very close relationship with the EDC as well. Or certainly, a lot of these projects, as you're aware, carry a nondisclosure agreements with them.
Right.
But it is not our effort to replace this EDC's efforts in terms of economic development. Working together and collaborating, certainly one of those. And, you know, until we have the, obviously, there's a lot of discussions, and discussions are great, but until that opportunity comes. But I can assure you that the port and the commission supports the efforts and respects, as a former chairman of the Regional Economic Development Corporation through the Exxon Project, I support the efforts of the REDC. So I think I speak for my fellow commissioners.
Well, and my point is, is making sure any potential project out there, we, NDAs, we don't need to know what they make, where they are. We just need to know what would be the water demand and what is the potential for it.
You know, in this legislation that just was passed, and there was an article in the Wall Street last week, that, you know, making hydrogen was really stripping it out of natural gas.
Yeah.
Where this legislation makes water that much more competitive with natural gas. So as I've told you in the past personally, whatever you think you need in water, you need to think bigger because it's going to happen. There's industry coming here, and the industry that's here is planning on growing. And I don't think there's anything that we're doing at the port level that the EDC's not aware of, but it could be, but I don't think so.
Okay. Well, that's the thing. Just making sure that those lines of communication are, are open with. And even on the blue hydrogen on there, you have steam methane reformers, steam, they have water demand. You have more with the green through electrolysis. But, yeah, just, let's make sure, port, staff, you're communicating if you have a, something that you're looking at on there, outside of the EDC, that at least the water demand, we have awareness of it. So, thanks.
You know, on that note, I really would love to see the communication between our staff and your staff, and between us and the council even be better. And I know that over the last few weeks, several of the council people have had two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour briefings with, with both the chair and with staff. And hopefully, we answered a lot of the questions that were being asked. But, you know, Jeff Pollak, who's ahead of our strategic planning, and beyond that, is really, really knowledgeable in regards to carbon capture, blue hydrogen, green hydrogen, and all the things that are going on. And it's, it's really, really interesting. And the port, as Gabe, Commissioner Gray just mentioned, you know, we are, we are trying to stay up with him in terms of his knowledge, and he's doing a very good job of educating us. But the, the amount of industry that is looking at this area to do carbon capture, and green hydrogen, and blue hydrogen, and ammonia, is, it's coming. And, and there is going to be, and not to mention, just getting back to what you said about, I think existing industry that we have here today have plans for more growth. And this is, you know, it's just, it's just going to happen. So the needs for water for this area are going to continue to grow and grow and grow. And, and the only way you're going to stop this growth is if you cut off the water.
Thank you.
Councilman Barra.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, you know, I just want to publicly thank you as well as, you know, I had the pleasure, I finally got my briefing. And, you know, I appreciate Omar, you know, Sean. They had just come back from a golf tournament, and Sean took the time to shower for me. So that was, you know, what is it, Commissioners on, was on by WebEx or Zoom, or Chairman's on, Sarah and Jeff. Although, I still have other questions. What is it? I was, I was very pleased with the meeting and the open line of communication. I was able to ask questions. And, you know, I just, you know, I got to visit with Commissioner Gerda this, last week, and, you know- Guerra this last week, and, you know, I'd like to visit with the two of you guys and just kind of express. And here's the point that I made, and I think it speaks for all of us, I mean, I'm just speaking individually, is that we appoint you as professionals to be ambassadors to us as elected officials because we have to answer to our, to the body that elects us. And so, and that's the thing, and I conveyed that to staff, and they very graciously understood. And I tell you what, I agree with you. Jeff is a wealth of knowledge. I think if I would have visited with him two months ago, then, what is it, there, some things might have, I would have felt a little bit differently. And so, but anyway, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank you and your team, and once again, Omar, and what is it, I still am more interested to see where we're going. And then once again, it's just basically so I can answer to my constituents.
Let me just say, Councilman Barrera, as anyone, certainly, we want to make ourselves available. You asked some great questions, things on water rates, salinity, and certainly the community development or the community interaction, things that certainly, my view, and as I stated previously there, is council certainly as a body has the ability to certainly engage the port. We've made it extremely clear from the commissioners to support the efforts of the city of Corpus Christi to obtain their permit. So that remains the case. So whatever we can do to help continue that support, until you say you're ready or you come up with that decision or that meeting or what have you, I can tell you that from a staff level, we've been extremely supportive in asking for constant updates as to, with regards to the needs of the city of Corpus Christi. So I appreciate the phone calls. Certainly, I try to, we try to do our best to answer the questions and certainly appreciate what you're doing on the other side there, too.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of bridges, and you don't have to provide this information today, I know this is off the cuff, but I know the port has a substantial investment in the overall bridge project. Could you at some point, and maybe Omar could help out, to provide the council with a number of what your total investment is? I know including buying out homes and...
Around 85 million.
85 million?
That includes the contribution of land and cash, and then the buyout in the Hillcrest area.
Okay. So approximately 85 million?
Approximately 85 million.
Okay. Is that, are you saying that's from the port or the city contributed to the MPO? Is that in that 85 million?
No.
That sounds kind of high. Well, I'm going to be getting it myself.
Why don't you clarify that?
Yeah, I think the city contributed the majority of the money through our MPO. I'll be, I'll provide you the information because the Call of Times is asking me, so I'll provide it to the full council.
And Peter, include any reimbursements that occur in all of that.
Right, I think we provided like in excess of 50 million, and the port's amount was a lesser amount, but I'll double check and report.
Well, Hillcrest alone was 20.
Yeah, you gave 20, and we gave over 50.
Yeah.
So that's the 85.
Yeah.
The city's given the most.
We gave the majority. We gave like 50 to 60 if 85.
Yeah, just on that contribution, but altogether, we're over 100 million.
Right, Councilman. You and I talked about it before, where we certainly gave the majority.
About 110, 120.
Yeah, we thought it was 85, but if we're wrong, let us know.
We will.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to have that information. I know when I was at the county, when the bridge project started, we, our invoice at that time was 12 million. I don't know if they put any additional in since I left the commissioner's court, but, and that doesn't sound like a lot, but for the county, that's a lot of money. So, and the other thing is, with respect to your community involvement, and we all sincerely appreciate the fact that you do that, until I became a commissioner, I had no idea how many nonprofit organizations there are in New Haysis County, but they started lining up at my door as soon as the ink was dry on the swearing-in papers. But I don't know where this falls in, but I'm going to be working closely with Bea Hanson over at the food bank and making sure she gets an application in on October 1st. But I think under the term of health and safety, the food bank, and if we were ever to anoint St. Hoods in this city, Bea would be at the front of that line. And so it's an important thing that we provide for this community, for many families who, without that, would significantly be impacted by health issues. So thank you very much for that. I know that's a, it's a very controversial subject sometimes. I know I had to make choices, the county had to make, I know you have to make choices. You can't give to everybody. But anyway, thank you very much.
And to piggyback on that, Councilman, thank you for bringing it up because it is a conversation I've had. I'm not sure, I don't think Commissioner Engel with you, Gabe, I'm not sure, I didn't? I know Commissioner Huge, I guess, maybe it was just you. Okay, well, either way, it was brought up that, you know, the food bank, they are in a huge capital camp, in the midst of one, capital campaign in building a new facility because it is so extremely needed. It really is. And it's hard for us sometimes to recognize that or see it. But as Councilman Pusley just mentioned, Bea Hanson is really doing God's work on this earth. And so, you know, I hope I'm not violating anything, but I would absolutely strongly suggest that you, well, you know, I'm saying, we're saying, consider, you know, giving her money, but she's got to apply for it. And so I don't know if she has or not. I would imagine so, and my understanding, my understanding is that she has actually. That is my understanding, that she has applied and it was not given or not approved.
Just to clarify from staff, the legal aspect is we cannot provide money for building some facilities, so there may be, that may be something. But certainly engaging Bea and the food bank, we're certainly open. We all know what Bea does. She's done a tremendous job, so we can look at that however necessary to support. But there's certain components to the law that allow us to do certain things in apparent building.
But maybe for her operations.
Certainly from an operational standpoint.
I mean, Omar looks like he might want to say something. Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, we will absolutely look at giving her a contribution. It's just that last, we've given her money in the past, it's just that last request was specific for her building campaign, and P and D, P and D funds cannot be given to build infrastructure.
Right.
So, but we will certainly look at that, and I can assure you, we will be making a contribution in October.
Okay.
And by the way, one last thing on, you guys were talking about the dredge and the sailors. Our channel director of improvement, Dan Kuzma, is in conversation with that organization, the CC Marina, so we're on top of that.
Good, good. Thank you.
That's all tied together. We certainly, we've had some conversations with Steve Banta, our engineering team, so I'll follow up, see where that's at.
Good. Very good. Thank you. And thank you for addressing that, Omar, on Bea. I appreciate that. Okay, so we will, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, I just want to thank you guys for coming up here for the presentation. I think you feel the way I do that right now, we are in a critical time in our city's history as far as being able to secure a more reliable drought-proof source of water. And so I do appreciate the offer and hopefully the opportunity to discuss with you the way that it will best help the citizens here in Corpus Christi and our area. So again, thank you for the update, and I look forward to further discussions on this.
Yeah. Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on some of the things I said earlier. You know, I was thinking, you know, I'd like to have, put me on the schedule with Sean Strawbridge and see if we can kind of see what that looks like, get more detail on it. Also, I'd be careful with donating to animal shelters or animal things because if you give to one, you got to give to all of them. So, anyway, thanks.
What? Where'd that come from? Where's that about?
Because we, you know, we gave to one, and then all the other ones got mad at us. So I just want to...
No, no, no.
If you're going to give to one, give to all of them. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Again, I guess we'll see you all in December.
Well, I would like, who am I going to, who's going to follow up with me on certain things that you guys, Commissioner? Okay.
Yep.
Wonderful. So you have probably about three things.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Are we done until December?
Your schedule stands, sir.
Well, there's one next month.
Your schedule stands, sir.
September, Mayor?
Your schedule stands, sir.
I'm going to be in India next month, so.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your time. Okay. Peter, is there, let's see, is there anything we need to follow up on?
Some of the, yeah, we're tracking them, so we'll make sure we get the responses.
Oh, with him? No, I meant with us, but, oh, yes, we will track that. Yes, no, I mean, I mean with city business.
City business?
Yeah.
With respect to the agenda you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there's no more items on the agenda. That's it, no executive session?
Right.
Right, so we're done.
So we're done.
We'll be reconvening tomorrow at 10 o'clock.
Oh, yes, tomorrow is budget for what are the...
For water and wastewater.
Just the two?
Just those two. And then Thursday at 9 is the remainder.
Oh, right. So tomorrow and Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll see everybody tomorrow, and we have lunch in the back. Okay? And there being no further business, I adjourn this meeting.